Okay, we are back from our recess for lunch. We have our final two presentations this afternoon. Our first presentation, Hank is going to be back before us talking about our ARPA subjects and re-prioritization of them.
You didn't have enough already?
Or not, we'll see.
Haven't talked to you in a long time.
All right, Sarah's gonna put up a little presentation. Tom's here, who is not in this presentation, so it will be a smooth operation. So, coincidentally, just about a year ago is whenever the council adopted the fund, or received the funds and adopted some plans, I'm gonna take you through some basic, for those that are new, I'll take you through some basic guidelines, rules, and timelines that apply with ARPA funds. We'll talk about how the county received it and approved these uses in certain categories. I've actually broken out a little farther, just so you can understand more. And then we'll talk about one year later, where do we stand as far as having these funds in utilization phase as opposed to just planning? And then we'll cut a little deeper and say what's really available, because some things that'll show on the second slide that are not used yet are fully intended to be used, but it may have to do with a capital situation that that takes time, and we'll talk some about that. And then we'll finish up with, when we see what is truly available, what are the needs that you guys can decide priority-wise where those should go? So, I didn't invent this, I pulled it right off the federal website, but the uses of ARPA funds, first one is what everybody likes to do because it's to replace lost revenue. If the government lost money, there was a, you can use a very complicated formula to calculate a really big number if you lost money, but Beaufort County really didn't lose money. So we had to use a standard deduction, like when we do our taxes, our standard deduction is 10 million. So of the 37, 10 million is the maximum that you can use for items that don't fit into the other categories. So, they purposely, in the final rule, broaden some of these definitions so that there is flexibility, so it's not as tight as could be read. But respond to far worse than public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic. So, that has to do with health clinics, health departments, businesses that were affected, individuals that were affected. Our nursing programs are to respond to this, workforce development initiatives overall are to respond to these, whether it's economic or health-related issues. Additionally, some outdoor activities and parks can be seen because there are outdoor activities for, all of this is in the event of a future pandemic or medical emergency, how do we better respond? So, the next is premium pay for those workers that worked through this, and you guys did that, didn't make it in, I'm fine. My previous employer was dingy and didn't do it, but it's fine, I like, I find it. And the last one is invest in water sewer broadband infrastructure. Again, very broad, I mentioned it earlier when we talk about economic development and needs around the county, and I'll go now to where, and you can read into the fine print if you want, but I don't think you need me to read for you. So, the rules and the timelines. It has to be obligated by the end of next calendar year. We are not in anywhere close to danger of running into that deadline. Obligated, for example, it would be transferred to an entity for use, actually that counts as spent at that point, like our Good Neighbor programs with the municipalities. The expenditure, direct expenditure by us has to be done by the end of 2026. Again, I don't feel like there's any danger of running into that deadline, as I'll show you here in a few minutes. The longest-term projects that are gonna take to expand would be for some of these health community centers or parks. All right, so, here's the numbers. We're awarded this odd, not-so-round 37, 317, 37 million 317,000 somewhere in $46. It was adopted a year ago and received, and here are the categories that you would put them in. So workforce enhancement, public health, recreation improvements. The Good Neighbor program, for those that don't know, that was, municipalities really received a smaller allocation proportionate to counties, so the county decided to give them opportunity to sub-grant, supplement their ARPA-eligible activities. Oh, infrastructure, this is a big one, but it can cover water sewer, it can cover some broadband, initial projections were for some roads, et cetera, but in the final rule, that was, that's not an eligible expense, so it needs to be water sewer broadband. Emergency management, that is the state system to unify all the county fire districts and dispatch, where in the final, where's Patrick? Hopefully the final award phase, which has been kind of interesting to go through, and we'll have much more to record on that. Enterprise and capital are things that can fit into that standard deduction, things that had to be done. Improvements at public works or purchasing of equipment, just the things that government needs to do that didn't have funds to do in initial phases when we received the funds, they fit there. Airport improvement, and then initiative administration, I like that, that's B, there's a, that also paid the premium pay for employees, that is, helps us not go to jail, she's really sharp, it's good to have a good dedicated accountability, do things right. And also the funds, general mental health coordinator for the county, just things to address issues that are allowable. Go ahead.
Is that the allocation?
That is the total allocation.
You have, can you tell us how much was already allocated? We didn't know the allocation, go to the next slide.
So, next. Here is what has been, what is, what remains is on the right side. And so I made a presentation in November to the group, this was of different individuals, the numbers are close to the same as far as where we stand, because if you look on these categories, the 3 million in public health are for these health centers, community centers, and what we're gonna talk about going forward is, how do we do them, as I'll show on the last slide, with inflation and increased building costs, we're gonna have to think creatively about how to outfit, renovate, or build onto existing buildings as opposed to standalones, because the dollars just will not make sense. The $3 million are for park improvements, or, again, to have outdoor activities in the event, and this was part of the initial program. There's only 500,000 left in the Good Neighbor, that's blocked in because they're waiting, that's not that they're sitting on it, we're just working together on a project that makes sense for both of us, that they can use it to contribute to. Infrastructure, that's the one big bucket, but, infrastructure takes time, and that's what we'll talk about next, is that is what can be used, but there are more needs than one would think on the surface. Back to emergency management, go ahead.
You hold the name PSA, PSA or PS?
PSD.
PSD, that's the?
That came out of that.
That one, got you, okay.
So we had initially had a base infrastructure and a water sewer, that's all lumped into the infrastructure category. Innovation, that's important, that we'll talk on the last slide, that part of that is broadband infrastructure, and Patrick and I have been discussing it, we worked with all the providers on making these, before we expanded our funds, we wanted to make sure that the providers applied for federal funds through the state. Unfortunately, none of that was awarded within Beaufort County, however, we've kind of, we've already started planning a follow-up grant process to bridge the gap for those that need internet speeds, and we'll talk more about that. I think that's something that needs to stay on the table, which you'll see in the final slide. Back to emergency management, that's the station alerting system that we are, that's sitting there obligated to purchase these systems. And just so you know what that is, right now we have, what is it, 13 fire districts and different systems, different call signals. You'll be sleeping in the middle of the night and it will go off blaring crazy, and it might not even be needed for that call. These are smart systems that will, through dispatch and through our, you can correct me, he's the smart one on IT, it will only go exactly where it's needed and tell you exactly what's going on and ramp up, you're awake up based on the urgency, it's a health and safety for them, it's better for all the citizens, and for all the departments so that they can have better unified communication through dispatch. Enterprise and capital, those are the things that we talked about that were really taken off of there first, because we had existing needs, whether it's at public works garage or airport improvements, et cetera. And then, when I put the 75 is the remaining on the staffing, is because we did not, so that's where the 16 million comes from. Now, this still sounds like a lot of money, but as we discussed, some of these things are really happening, so what is the real, what's really left? And it's this infrastructure amount, and I'll just go right to the next one, because the needs are big, because we had set aside, you know, 700,000 for broadband but with no grant money coming, maybe there's more needed, maybe not. We've talked about the, on the bottom, cost overruns, et cetera, on some of these hard facilities. We have a need to relocate the DEHAC department, its health, which we're selling for affordable housing, and affordable housing itself is a very, it wasn't in that first slide, but in follow-up issuances from the federal government, they are encouraging ARPA funds, which is why, we already have, with ARPA funds, fund, we funded the trust fund with the funds from ARPA. But there are other ways, long-term, to think about, how do we better foster and facilitate real impactful affordable housing? We can talk about that later. And then water and sewer for economic development, if it's an allowable and encourage use, is that something that you'd wanna look at to help get these sites that we mentioned closer to the development phase, so that when somebody comes to ask us, or comes to ask us on, hey, I need this site, and it said, well, we could get water and sewer there, but we're kinda working on engineering plans, and that conversation's over when you have that, at that point, because they need to know, is it there, what's the capacity, and when can we move in? So that is my shortest presentation, but it's really enough for you guys to have discussion, what kind of, what kind of things do you wanna do within these categories?
Can you go back to the list, please? On the right-hand side is the 16 million dollars that's left. You said it has to be obligated by '24 and spent by '26, and the long lead time is infrastructure, because, you know, it could take over a year to build whatever you do, plus all of the prep work, doesn't leave us much time. I mean, it's '23 now, that's three years. So, with that in mind, I think that's our focus is, are there things within our desire utilizing that money, and can any of that money be shifted? Because you said, there are some things, for instance, the public health, we have $3 million, if we wanted to do it the way we originally talked about, three individual stations around, it might be over 3 million. But if it could be accomplished within this time period, it may be worthwhile doing that. So that's just the discussion we have to have, is how are we going to get investment for a park? Because time marches on, and there is no forgiveness. While we're close, give us a little bit more time? No.
Good question, Chairman.
Yes.
To relocate the DEHAC offices, is any idea where, what, renovate another building?
Potentially, yeah, we're finalizing some numbers to bring to you at the next finance.
That's gotta be done.
Has to be done, that's why we have to get some numbers to bring to you all.
What's the estimate for the broadband since we didn't get any state money?
They're really, I'd have to have Patrick speak to it, but there are differing opinions of where the need might be, and what the providers say, and what the state interprets as need, and that's where we need to, I think in Beaufort County, we're gonna have to have more of a customized granting situation, because a lot of times there might be a really good line running down the streets, so that as far as the state's concerned, you have access. But you live on the fifth property down a driveway, and therefore you can't get it.
Right. Not only that, but the state has analyzed every county and every community in every county to find out what is the broadband desert. So we know there are still deserts in Beaufort County, on Holyhead Island, in St. Helena, in northern Beaufort County, other areas that we may have to take it up, because the provider, you know, whether it's Spectrum or Hard Gray or anybody else, they can't do it or won't do it because it's not fiscally to their advantage to put broadband in.
Right.
And the final point is, great, you can put broadband there, you can get it to the house, now what do you do? Because it's so god-awful expensive with the packages that you have to buy in order to make it work.
I guess my question really is, can we do it in the time we have, some of the broadband, that's, with a grant or something?
I think the challenge is just identifying the homes that want the service and that can't get it from the provider as-is, and getting the construction costs to get it out to them. That's where the challenge is.
Let me, let me see if I might. When these funds were first allocated to the county, and Jared provided counsel with a item where I suggest to have, where the funds were going to be allocated initially, on that list it had broadband, but we only allocated $500,000, I think, for broadband in St. Helena, as well as in the northern part of the county, which is, which is my area. And I viewed at that, that I didn't think that we were, well, I asked Jared, I said, why is only $500,000 being allocated to, say, to my area, the rural part of the county, and to St. Helena? And he said, well, because the state, we know we're gonna get state funding, and so we'll see what state funding allocates, and then, so we only allocated $500,000. Now we find out that the state didn't allocate anything. And so in the initial round of expanding some of these funds, our communities and our district, we got $500,000. Now, now, I will say to all of us that, in the rural communities where many of our schoolchildren are having, not having access to Wi-Fi, the library went through the process of trying to, and that didn't work out so well, so we still have a segment of the population in Beaufort County that doesn't have access to Wi-Fi. So I'm saying to the administration, I'm saying to this council, that we need to take the initiative to ensure that we get Wi-Fi out into the rural parts of this county, so that we provide all of our students an equal access to broadband.
I don't think there's anything stopping us from moving money around in those, in those baskets, do you?
No.
But that, I mean, that fits into the infrastructure basket, which is where the money is.
Right.
I think, thinking back in what Gerald just said, before, this council made a, made broadband access in the community all over Beaufort County available, and we used that as an initiative to move forward, and then all of a sudden, money came available, and that's why I understood why you only put a half a million dollars in that, because we were banking on funding coming from the state. However, money is not coming from the state, because the state has decided that they would use a grant process and not allocate to all these various counties, and so we are probably not on the list of counties that have greater needs and et cetera, et cetera, but we have pockets of the county, and I don't know whether another grant, waiting on grants?
No, I don't think we wait on a grant, I think we have to make a plan to use our funding for that purpose. That's what we've talked about doing, is maybe we create a granting program to people, or how we, that's what we have to piece together, where's the need? It's one time when somebody says, I don't have internet, but we need to farm out this information, what is the issue? Is it the access is far from the road, can't pay for the bill, what, there has to be so many things that could fit into that.
And I would love for you to come back to us, find funding for, I mean, what would be appropriate, you know, to make?
The good part, so you know, if you make it a, if you make it a priority as a council, the way that the ordinance is written, to make it a priority and use these funds to design a program, and it doesn't have to be that $500,000 necessarily, right? It was buckets were approved, and then it says, as need arises, can be shifted, and we'll bring back a program when we've identified the truths.
I think this county needed a priority when they said they wanna make access to?
So we know $500,000 isn't going to be enough, because it was gonna be $500,000 on top of the $700,000 we were gonna get from the state. We don't even know if that's gonna be enough in this day and age, number one. Number two, who's going to put in those lines? Number three, which provider is it going to be? Because they're territorial, by the way the state has set them up. So we need all of that information.
What we found out through the process is, the only way that it's gonna be anywhere close to affordable for anybody, including us, is the closest current provider that has trunk lines is gonna have to be the one that we work with. So it's gonna have to be multiple providers, and based on the different areas of the county.
Yeah, that's right. So like, so for St. Helena, it's, a lot of it's Comcast, there is some Bright Speed out there now, LaBico's gonna be ERTC, some Hard Gray and Cable One as well, but yeah, different providers in all different areas of Beaufort.
So someone created this bucket list of amounts, and what authority does someone need to move money from infrastructure to broadband?
Infrastructure is broadband.
Okay, so then, who can allocate funds to that? Who makes that decision?
This, not here, we, right?
You guys set those bucket, you set these categories up.
We did, yes. Okay, so we have to take action to authorize money to broadband.
If you really wanna move it from a, if you wanna really change it from public health.
Infrastructure to broadband, in that category, there's already money. So we can allocate, by action, this deliberate body, number?
We can bring you back a plan, and you say?
Yeah, okay.
That's what we should do.
Yes, we, I think we're in agreement that that's what we should do. We have two critical areas that are sorely underserved by broadband. So we're gonna need to know, you know, as it was eloquently said, we have a number of providers that can do this, it's gonna be picking and choosing the one for the particular area, finding out when they can do it, and then, great, gets to the house, how do we know it's going to be used? Because there is that other element, you have to sign up for services.
I don't think we can worry about that part of it, that's up to, you know, that, we can only take it to the house, so to speak.
Whoa.
Well, we can't, I mean, how?
I don't know, we'll have to figure it out.
Well, maybe they, but that's individuals' contract.
Yeah, I know, it's a monthly bill, and then even equipment purchase, I mean, is that's a consideration.
Well, first, we need to see how much it's gonna cost to get it to the house.
Right.
And then go from there.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, so a quick question, are the private entities, are they, are they gonna be kicking in anything to help run these lines, or is this just on us to bear the burden to, I wanna get private entities areas?
So, when I've had discussions with the providers, you know, they've indicated that they're, that they have service all throughout Beaufort, but there are little pockets down ends of streets that may be, that may not be cost-effective for them to build out to, but there may be a house or two at the end of the street, and so they don't wanna build out to that house if that person is not gonna sign up.
Right.
And it's too cost, it's too cost, it's not cost-effective for them to build out, and that's where we could probably help build out there, but we don't want, I don't know if we would necessarily wanna devote funds to building out to a house that they don't want.
Well, here's the real question, can someone ask the school board, every school, every child gets a laptop when they go to school here?
Yeah.
Is that true? So everybody has a laptop, but they may not have internet access because they can't afford a monthly payment?
No, they don't have service.
It's not available. No, I guess, no service, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look into that part.
Yeah.
But they have the equipment, but they don't have a provider that can pay for a monthly fee, that's another thing we have to figure out. So, you know, run the line, pay for the line, but we don't have to buy the equipment because they get it at school. Okay, that's good.
I would like to add, we cannot expend public funds on private property. There has been other services that have recently been part of projects, where those projects are no longer being discussed because the utilities, we cannot connect them directly to the property, so.
At the end of the street.
We can keep it on our right-ofways and on our easements, but there is a cost from the utility to connect from that street to that house, we cannot pay for that.
Right, right. Unless you can find a way to pay for it.
Unless you can find a way.
Okay, okay. All right, so, obviously you know the desire of council is to explore exactly what we can do in this regards to, to provide service in two key areas that are underserved at this point in time, knowing all the impediments that we may have along. this point in time, knowing all the impediments that we may have along the way. But again, time is of the essence, because it takes time to order that equipment, dig it, put it in, try everybody, those kinds of things.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add, because I think Ms. Kellen actually talked about the school district, but can we work with the school district, partner with them? They may have some funds as well.
Yeah, we'll speak to them about this, because however, we can maybe collaboratively pitch, maybe they can, maybe they could help out with something with access on the payment side, and we can do, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about all of that.
I wonder if, Brittany, if the Boys and Girls Club suddenly had money? They have other restrictions on paying things on private property because they're not a government agency, right?
If they suddenly.
I got it, I can tell by your face. I'm good, I'm good. I was just saying, if the Boys and Girls Club can fund this, that'd be great.
Just don't say it in public, Larry.
I know.
Sorry, are we looking at partnering with other entities such as BMH or TCO, trying to stretch the dollars?
Well, that's what we did with, with the workforce funds, is the programs that are rolling the most at this point are in the nursing healthcare training world, and that's putting money together between BMH especially. But the most recent one is the joint training facility with USCB, us and Beaufort Memorial, that's going to really.
I think that's what I would like to look for, is, is things that are already in the works that need funding, where we can stretch our money and make this go a lot further and have larger impact.
I agree. And that's why we did, it's not an excuse, because we all, it just is what it is, but we, we put a lot of eggs in the basket, because these providers from Comcast, they were very positive, Comcast, Hargray, and other, even PRTC in the north, they all put in really extensive applications to try to get this infrastructure, this broadband funding. Everybody was kind of aghast at the end that there was nothing.
Okay. All right, so I think, this particular one, let's take a look at something like the recreation programs. There's $3 million left there. We heard great presentations of parks, and what we would like to do in the future with our parks, that we need money to do that. We're in the design phase for certain parks. Whitehall is one of them, Okati is another one. Can any of those dollars be used to expand that? If that's the case, then let's bring something forward for that as well.
Could I add a.
Where?
Gloria Parks Recreation Center.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if you could.
Yeah, well, you know, there were a whole list of, multiple of those, I'm sure.
That's what we're waiting for, to get the parks and master plan back, and see how we can contribute different funds into that process.
Easily, we could spend that $3 million.
Yeah. Without question. At the deal, the deals, you know, where we have the baseball fields, parks and recreation can utilize there, but parking is very, actually very, very limited. And so we need to look at expanding the parking lot, looking at some acres that are in close proximity, to see if we can expand for the parking, to bring the parking in on the grounds and not out in the street.
So, we easily can use up as much as $2 million in infrastructure for broadband. We can spend all $3 million in public health and recreation. We know the Good Neighbor Program is $500,000 with left, and we're going to spend that. That still leaves $6.3 million in infrastructure that we can do. So we need to go back to the list of things to say, okay, what are some of the great things that we were shown yesterday that we can utilize these for that purpose? And are they?
Right, well, that's where the infrastructure, that's why we mentioned earlier with economic development, because it's so clearly spelled out for water and sewer. It's odd in this entity, because places where I worked before, you owned the water and sewer utility, where this is a partnership. So, but, that's what you can use it for. Infrastructure, remember, is water, sewer, broadband. You can then fit it into other categories that we spoke about earlier. But I think we just need to be careful and calculated in what, not these buckets, but the federal allowable uses. But if it's, if it's in parks, maybe that is it. We'll just have to look at, how does the funding fall out? Do we do something later with ANH Act? How do we cobble together the funds that accomplish the tax lift that you guys.
Yeah, so going back to your definitions that fall under there, let's say it could be as much as $6 million. That's a lot of money, but there's a whole list of things that could eat that money up pretty darn quickly.
Right.
Now, you know, there's affordable housing, water and sewer projects, as you've said, healthcare centers, as you've said.
Can any of that money go in the regional housing trust fund? Can any of it be donated? 1.2 million already did.
Yeah, 1.2 million did. And the medical stuff, but anything but of Beaufort Jasper Health, out of that million dollars?
They did not. They did not, lie.
It's 3 million. York, it's 3 million. Beaufort Jasper Health, didn't get any money.
I will call.
That's why I refer to this as the cookie jar.
A health center idea. This goes back to the community center and the senior wellness centers that we talked about. Before we give that money away, we have plans for it. We're looking at St. Helena, we talked about adding on to the libraries, that we co-locate the senior wellness center there, and then we're going to present Monday about an option for the LaBico library site, and that's the funding pool for that project. So that $3 million is spoken for, and you saw the needs for parks and rec. We've already kind of inked in some obligations for the recreation part of that. So just wanted to mention that before we gave any of that money away.
Right, so we may be able to utilize some of the $6 million that may be left in infrastructure that can be more appropriate and used in those other areas as well. I mean, just because we have a bucket of $6 million doesn't mean we have to spend all $6 million of that in that particular line. We can move it around.
Sorry.
You don't get the best bang for our dollars.
That's why, that's one of the, listen, these are the things that you've all mentioned that are a priority, and so I just say that we just have to strategically, and we'll bring it back to you, to funnel them into these priorities.
Right. Okay.
York, doesn't, doesn't St. Helena seniors have a facility next to the clinic right now?
Yeah.
It's in Leroy Brown.
I don't know how that's, I mean, but what he's, what he's talking about now is, is expanding the library to accommodate the seniors, and then it will move out of Beaufort Jasper Comprehensive Health into that facility. That's what, that's what I understood Chuck to be saying. And one of the things that the seniors have been at, that's Beaufort Jasper Health, and they like the location, because it's, you know, if they need emergency for health reasons, they're right there. Moving it to a library is right.
Okay, I, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Why we.
Plus, plus, the new director for Comp Health would love that space to be available to her, so she can bring in more staff, you know, so that was the kind of conversation and stuff, but.
Hey, can you go back for the federal definition of things? Chuck was going to tell.
So the Leroy Brown Center is totally separate from what we're talking about with the senior wellness. It would be Beaufort County is part of our senior program, because we do feeding, we do health education. We are leasing that space at Leroy Brown now. What we would do is move the operation from there into this new building, even though they're on the same site, it would not be the same programming as what Comp Health gives.
I was just trying to see what some money to where we could allocate to broadband.
I get it, I understand.
These are the only.
I mean, there is, well, there's about 150 pages of further definition. These are the bigger, broad definitions. But everything that we're talking about fits, except for the base capital, that $10 million.
All right. All right, so you have an idea of how quickly we want you to put together a plan, because a lot of this has got long lead time. And it will, we may be able to commit the money, but, you know, if we don't do it now and commit it now, we're never going to get it built by 2026. And that's dropped dead date, as far as I know.
All right. Turn it off.
Dale, you're going to introduce the next topic?
I will.
Or our final topic of the day?
We might get out of here a little early today.
Oh, no.
Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce our county assessor to you. Many of you know her, some of you may not. Ms. Ebony Sanders has been with the county for quite a few years. I should have asked you that question, but I didn't. Through many assessors, and she took the reins, what, three, four years ago, something like that, and doing a great job. Very busy, obviously, and this is a busy time of the year for, for this department. You may have gotten some questions from your constituents already, whether it be legal residents or the reassessment that is taking place this year. She has been busy going out into the community. Mr. Glover's had her at some events, and I think he and Ms. Howard have one coming up that she's going to be a part of. So we welcome that, and, you know, if you want her to come out to a town meeting type atmosphere with your constituents, then please call her office, and she'll, she'll certainly try to make that possible. So she's been speaking to our municipalities, mostly about reassessment. You may be, may have some questions this afternoon about that process, as well as, as the legal residents process, and all those things that, that make the tax release for our county. So a pleasure to introduce Ms. Ebony Sanders to you.
Thank you. Doing well, thank you. Thank you for inviting me, and thank you, Dale, for allowing me to speak. This is one of the things that I enjoy the most, but I also sometimes get very nervous about when I have to present. So to start us off, the ones that do not know me, I am the county assessor. My name is Ebony Sanders. I've had the wonderful opportunity to be the county assessor, starting an interim in 2019, and then I became the assessor in June of 2019. So it's been a journey, it's been wonderful, I've learned a lot, and I'm still learning. But what we're looking forward to, what is coming up next, I'm looking for the click button. Now, Mr.. What we have that's coming up very soon, that we are anticipating, or we're, we're looking forward to, is our quadrennial reassessment. And that's what I'm going to talk about today, amongst a few other things that will be on minds of yourselves, your constituents, and even with the county employees, because they are taxpayers as well. So for those who are watching, basically, it's things that may be elementary or redundant, or may, you know, it's, I'm trying to speak to the larger audience that is watching. So to get us started, so it don't be, there's quite a number of slides, I tried to boil it down to a few, and I will say this, that I felt like I was drinking out of a fire hydrant when I was putting this together. So you may feel the same way, don't go bad, it was the same, it was blurring to me going through it. So here we go. Okay, so let me just kind of go over the duties of the assessor. The duties of the assessor is outlined in the South Carolina Code of Law. So this is our duties and what our responsibilities are, is actually entitled 123790. And it breaks down, I kind of give you a kind of a summation of what we do, but it actually breaks down our responsibilities and my responsibility as your county assessor. Amongst other things, we do have the quadrennial reassessment that we're about to engage in, but there are other duties that we have to perform throughout the calendar year, even if we had that program going on. We have to list and appraise, we have to maintain our valuations, we have to pass along those numbers to the county auditor, so that a tax book can be produced, and so that the treasurer can actually produce a tax book and collect on that tax bill. We have to maintain our records of deed transfers and sale transactions, so when a deed is recorded, that deed comes to our department, we transfer into proper names, we make adjustments to Platts. There's many things that we do during a calendar year to ensure that our tax base is, is actually reflecting what we have on the ground. So valuation of your property is what we're going to kind of talk about today, and I do want to say that mobile homes are included with the valuation, valuation of properties, although they have a title. I'll put that on the slide, because some people look at them as personal property, under South Carolina Code of Law, they're not, they're considered real property, so we're responsible for valuing those as well. So the process that we have to go through with valuing properties, what, unlike a fee appraiser, our subject is every parcel in Beaufort County. We don't have a choice to pick which subject we can choose to value, we don't have a choice to say we want to turn down an assignment to value a property. Our valuing all of our parcels are our responsibility in the assessment, and we have to value each one of them and maintain values in the record. So let's talk about the quadrennial reassessment, that's really what I want to just home in on. This is a very, very important for us, important event for the county. The quadrennial reassessment occurs, I know that word quadrennial, I guess four, quad. Basically, what the quadrennial reassessment says is, is South Carolina Code of Law, we're going to, I'm going to show you the code that it's reflected in, and we decide on determining, look at the, analyze the sales, and then we actually present those sales in the fifth year. So our prior quadrennial reassessment, we implemented in 2018, so now we are due for a new quadrennial reassessment. And as many of you know, the market has been very, very, very active since 2018. But that's what we need to find out, what's going to happen out there. So in our quadrennial reassessment, what is the reassessment? Well, the reassessment, we have to equalize this on the valuation, that's what the program is about. It's countywide, so it's not, one property is not going to get overlooked, because it's a requirement that we revalue all the properties, and it's based on fair market value as of an effective date. And that is so, so, so important. So when you speak with your constituents, when they're coming to you about their valuations, and they're saying, where, this number, understand, the number is based on an effective date. Now, it's not based in the last six months, it's not based on, you know, six months in the future. Our effective date for the quadrennial reassessment is December 31, 2022. So whatever the market does, right now, if the market decides to do something concurrently, you cannot reflect that for the quadrennial reassessment problem due to quadrennials. Now, there is a portion of what our responsibility is, is to reassess the, throughout the, in between quadrennial reassessments, we have many reassessments, what I call them, that's under a different Code of Law, but what we're talking about today is the universe of all the properties in Beaufort County that's going to be revalued, and they're all going to have the same effective date. So here we go. And I will say this, that the definition I received, we are actually governed by multiple agencies, the South Carolina Department of Revenue, the International Association of Assessing Officials, you're, you're on the use path, we are also regulated by the licensing board. So all of these agencies, we have to comply with when we're doing our valuations. So here's the South Carolina Code that we, we are relying on, that tells us what we have to do and when we have to do it. It tells us in the fifth year, so here we are, in that fifth year. We're going to be sending out these notices very soon, and it reassures, it tells us to, on the end of December, the fourth year, which is 123122, and we have to notify the property owners of a change of value of more than $1,000. Now, I will say this, we do not just send those individuals for $1,000 or more out, we send a notice, notification out to all of our taxpayers. The law says that if it does not increase more than $1,000, we do not have to notify them. However, historically in Beaufort County, we've done that, we've sent the notifications out to all of our taxpayers. stop date, October 1st, got to have them out by then. So what we're going to, we have a schedule, I'll show you my schedule and our plan to kind of get them out. What we tried to do, what I tried to do is, I tried to get them to overlap the tax bill slightly, even though they cannot appeal on their tax bill. I want to give them the opportunity, because a lot of people will take that notification and they file in File 13. It says, this is not a tax bill on the top, because we don't want people sending checks in for these large amounts and wondering what's going on, or have a heart attack from that number. So I try to get it to overlap the tax bill slightly, so that they do pay, taxpayers do pay attention to their taxes. And at that time, that's when a lot of times they'll come in and ask questions, well, what's going on here? And then they'll have the opportunity to appeal, and we're going to talk about that briefly as well. So while we reassess, okay, we know that it's mandated, we can't get around it. The assessment is a freeze of evaluation date, that's important. Remember that when we said earlier that the effective date is 123122? That's frozen. It freezes unless there's a change of a mini reassessment that occurred, like an accessible transfer of interest, or something of a new construction, evaluation may change. But typically, from reassessment cycle to reassessment cycle, evaluation is, assessment is frozen. That's it, that's it. And when a taxpayer appeals between reassessment cycles, the way the law is written, we have to go back to 1231 of 2022 in this case, to determine evaluation. So hypothetically speaking, we hope this doesn't happen. It's not going, it's going, I got it timed wrong, excuse me. Just that the market changes dramatically, either hours or hours, and a taxpayer appeals in two years from now. Well, we have to educate our taxpayers and let them know that the effective date is 123122. Regardless of what's going on there, we cannot reflect that. We have to go back to that assessment date and see what the value was based on that effective date. But it freezes those valuations until the next quadrennial reassessment. And we're going to mention, I'm going to talk a little bit about capping as well, because you're probably interested in about capping and how that affects the broad number of properties. We, here, non-uniformity, because keep in mind, we have situations where we have ATIs that occur, accessible transfer of interest, and I don't dwell on a lot in this presentation for purposes of our discussion, but we reassess in between quadrennial, based on interest, and that has a different effective date. But what the reassessment does, which is very unique, is that it freezes, it cures any non-uniformities. ATIs causes non-uniformities, and it has numbers that are all lower than this because of the transfers that occurs in between quadruples. So this cures that. Get everybody back to square on the same effective date. The valuation date is the same on all properties, even if they transferred in '22, or if they did not transfer in '22, everybody has the same valuation date for this, when these assessment notices go out in fall of the year. And let's go to the next one. Now, I put a note here in red that the assessment is only broken the year following a property sale, or non-exempt transfer, or new construction. So going back to the ATI, accessible transfer of interest, the property is accessible when it transfers interest, we have a misconception in the community, or at large, even around the state, that is point of sale, there's no way in the law that says point of sale. It's not in there. It says accessible transfer of interest, ATI. And when that occurs, that's when the assessment freeze is removed, and the property is immediately reassessed based on a new effective date. So while we reassess, we'll continue on this discussion. We know December 31st is very important. So for our scheduled date is December 31st, 2022, we're going to implement this year in Here's our history. We go, I went back to 1988, there were some law changes in '88, so I kind of wanted to show you all the history of it, that this just occurred, it's been going on for quite a while. And our next one that's after '23 will be in '28, but we'll have another one coming up again soon. Comes around pretty quick. So, next question is, well, how do y'all come up with a property reassessment? It is, you know, we have a massive appraisal process, because remember, entire county is our subject, can't pick and choose, we're trying to bring on a value, and we look at the market sales to determine the valuations of the properties. Now, even if a property didn't sell, the law says we have to reassess it. And so we look at these sales, and we look, and we do our analysis based on statistical measures to come up with the property values for these properties. Now, you may ask the question, well, do y'all go to every single property in Beaufort County? There's 133,000 parcels, there's only about nine of us. So the law does not require us to go and put boots on the ground on every parcel, okay? So it allows us, under the, I mentioned before, we have these agencies that we report to, and we have to come into compliance with. Well, it's, under these agencies, there's reasonable measures that we can use other measures to determine value. We look at MLS, we use data that we receive from the transact, the sale transfer, the deed transfer, we use our wonderful GIS department, we use different measures to determine the valuation, and we decide on those values, and we post those values. So again, these standards here, the agencies that we, that all we have to come into compliance with, South Carolina Code of Law, again, Department of Revenue, internal, the International Association of Assessing Officials, and these industry standards, we are, we have to look at what's going on in it to keep up with appraisal standards, and make sure that we are in compliance with those as well. Again, we're talking more about modeling. We model, we use coefficients of dispersion, standard deviation, we use those different kinds of variances, we do those models, we use those to determine our valuation. Now, I will tell you this, that we will come up with valuation for our quadrennial reassessment. I'm not sure if it's in one of my slides or not, but I'll mention it if it is, please excuse me. We have, once we're finished, we will present our work, our final products to our finance department, so that they can provide that, so a budget can be formed. But in the same token, we have to provide at the quadrennial reassessment, our numbers to the South Carolina Department of Revenue. The South Carolina Department of Revenue will look at our countywide numbers and determine whether or not they're going to give us a pass or fail. We don't want a fail, that's not good. So what we do is, we send that out to the Department of Revenue, they will, and they'll look at our, our numbers, and then I look at our statistical measures, and they'll decide whether or not as a county we will pass or fail based on these measures. Once we get that letter, we will provide it to administration and say, woo woo, we're ready to go, and we did a good job, and then we start getting ready to start mailing notices. Again, I want to reiterate that we have over 1,300 different models. So a model could be a neighborhood, typically that's what it is. You wouldn't model a neighborhood like Sun City with a property in Old Beaufort, downtown Beaufort, it's two different neighborhoods. Okay, so we have different models to determine the valuation based on those neighborhoods. And our appraisers and our department, they have to analyze the sales within those models, and they create these models, and they watch the market and how the market is reacting. We are reactive, we're not necessarily proactive, we let the market lead us, and so we follow those market trends, and we actually come up with our values. For 133,000 parcels, we are now working, and that's as of '22 based on data from '21. So our '22 information is being analyzed, our appraisers are mapping the property by our, we're doing those analyses right now, so it's going to be more than 133,000. I suspect it should be about 130, almost 140, 140,000 parcels, and I'm going to briefly discuss why the parcel numbers are not increasing as high, but we're having quite a number of transfers, even though we're not creating new subdivisions. But I don't suspect it's going to hit 140, but I could be wrong, I haven't seen the splits yet, as of yet. I'm still waiting for them to finish though. But as we stand, the tax bills went out, roughly 133, a little more, a little less, but that's the ballpark. So this is the schedule, Mr. Passmore, that you wanted to see. These are our goals, this is the goal I set for our office. I want to get everything out, but it's March 31st, okay? May is my, one later thing, you know, that's what dropped dead, but I told my staff, March 31st, is when I want to make sure that administration has the preliminary valuations. When I say preliminary, I mean they are rough, they're really rough values, but they have to have something so they can have that communication with you. Again, we want to provide those rough numbers to our municipalities and those other political subdivisions, so that they can do what they need to do to prepare their budgets. Again, I'm pushing, I'm pushing my staff for March 31st, but I will not go past May 1st, and I already told them that, to get this information out. We're going to finalize everything, we want to send everything to Department of Revenue by April 3rd, you know, and at the latest, June 23rd. But by August, we're going to have the assessment notices in the mail. That's going to happen. And beginning of August, we're going to start doing that assessment notice production, that means we work with the vendor and getting the, you know, making sure everything looks right on the notifications, and then it should be in the mail by the end of August. So fall, we're going to have this information out to our taxpayers.
So based on that schedule, and knowing that December 31st, December 31st, '22 was the effective date of the assessment, walk me through, because you say you use a neighborhood. So you're going to take a look at the sales in that neighborhood that were effective by December 31st, 2022? Is it a week before, a month before, a year before, or some combination thereof?
Great question. Well, what we do is, we, the effective date of the report, so let's say report, because if we were doing an appraisal report, formal individual appraisal, which we have to do at times, the effective date of report is December 31st, 2022. But if we have to pull sales, you know, we want to get as close to December, there are neighborhoods that have no activity, and we still have to determine, so, or very limited activity with regards to properties that transfer. So we can go back, we can go, I tell my appraisers, you know, get as close to December 31st as possible with sales that make sense in the market. Now, I've done this in the past, when I've made adjustments to sales that have occurred in the first quarter of '23, because that, in my opinion, as an appraiser, would be better indication of the market December 31st than January, than to go back to January of '22, use the sale on December 31st, '22, if I have something in January of '23. So I tell, we'll look at, we'll peek into '23 to see how the market is performing, and see if we are, if our numbers are making sense, when we set that value for that neighborhood. But yes, to answer your question, we can go further back. We have pretty, it allows us to go back to 2018. While would we do that? We don't want to do that, because then you have to make adjustments on, make adjustments for time on our reports. But we try to get as close to December 31st.
Using Sun City as an example, because there's a lot of turnover in Sun City with new houses being sold and turnover of existing houses, and there's a monthly report that comes out from MLS that will tell you all about the particular houses, and so that would be an accurate statement that you would do something like that, okay?
Yeah, because in the case of Sun City, we love properties that, when I say flip, quickly, because it gives us a time adjustment. And if you don't have, there's maybe a section in Sun City that may not have very limited or not as reliable sales on the transaction, and we have a sale over here with a, we're going to apply a time adjustment. So we love it when they flip, because it gives us lists to work with.
I have a question. Since this is by South Carolina law, every county has to do this.
Correct.
But I presume that every county is not on our schedule?
You are correct.
So just as an aside, because I am Sun City, what county, what's Jasper County have?
I do not know their schedule.
Okay, so they might not be in a reassessment year.
Correct. We get, at our annual conference with the Department of Revenue, we had it in October, and they give us a list, and I think it's on, it may not be on the Department of Revenue's website, but it might be on the South Carolina Association of Assessors website, where it gives you the schedule for every county. And I want to, I have upstairs, because I go to the conference, and we...
I just know it will create havoc when part of us is Jasper County.
And I can speak on that briefly about that. A lot of towns, and we have a neighboring county, like for example Jasper, because Sun City is split, not necessarily, the majority of the properties on Sun City is in Beaufort, but there is a section, we have a street in Sun City, a split. And what, I've had conversations with appraisers over there and the deputy assessor with our last quadrennial, and when they were going through, they'll call us up and say, hey, this is what we're doing, and so we have those conversations to see what the market's performing with the other counties. But to peer into Jasper to use their sales may not be, we don't have to make adjustments to accommodate, because Beaufort, Beaufort even is different counties, is the minority saying, there's things that go in, is there, is there any effect to the jurisdiction that it's in based on mileage, is that, all of that affecting that sale? So we do have those conversations with the other counties, if they're a neighboring county with us. Of course, we wouldn't have, our city in Yamasee would not be a conversation that we necessarily would have with Anthony, because their market is different, but we still have to come up with those values. So that's a great question.
Yeah, because we have a neighbor that's split, Beaufort-Jasper, and he's going to get reassessment and I'm not, if it's Jasper.
Correct.
And hence the confusion.
Okay. Great question. Okay, so here's an example of our assessment notice, this is kind of what it would look like. I know it's kind of small print, and we're going to get, I gave it to Ms. Brock, so you can kind of blow it up and see. And what we try to do is, on our assessment notice, we explain what the different boxes are, maybe not with this, with the arrows, but we have a section on the notice that kind of, because there's a lot of information on there, I mean, what is, what is this? And so we don't want our taxpayers to be confused, and we also are going to have a citizen guide, we're going to update our citizen guide, the current one on our website, it's from 2018, we're going to update it to the new quadrennial reassessment period, but it will explain what those columns mean. So that's the old guide and what it looks like in, again, the 18, but the information is still very relevant. So capping, this is a big topic, and so let's go right into this as well. So capping is by Section 12373140. It tells us when we are to appraise and when we are to determine a fair market value. And under tapping, if a prop, basically, I, to explain it very simply, if you held on to your property and your property value increased from quadrennial to quadrennial reassessment, the most you're going to be taxed on is a 15% increase. So if your property value was $100,000, and the market decides that the market value's $1 million, the most you're going to take taxes for is $115,000. That's the, that's the short version of that. Keep in mind, the taxpayers cannot appeal their cap number, because the cap number is mandatory, that's in place. They can only appeal their market number. So what we have is that they'll see the market number, they say, let's go back to the $1,100,000 example, they'll see $1 million and just like, I mean, if I don't understand what's going on, it's a lot, I might lose it too. And then they, when they come in and explain it to them, yeah, we have your property value set at $1 million based on market, and showing their sales, but then you're only paying taxes on $115,000. And typically what happens, oh, okay, and they'll, they usually either understand, or they just say, I missed, you know, it's kind of an explanation.
So they went from $100,000 value to $115,000, even though the value went up nine times?
Correct, that's the way the cap law works. Capping law is part of Act 388, it came on, in some cases, for, just for fun fact, some of our properties in Beaufort County will have upwards of four caps on it. So what we have, and one of the issues that we have now, which I hope we get out to the constituents, is that this is where the, the non-uniformity is coming in, where you have one property owner, because of an ATI, accessible transfer interest, remember I said, it's accessible unless it transfers interest, so they don't have a cap, they don't qualify for the cap.
Because of the sale.
Because of the transfer. Correct. So what they'll say is, hey, they'll come in our office and say, my taxes are, their taxes are $500 and mine is $4,000. Why is that? That's not fair. it's, it's accessible unless it's transfer interest, so they don't have a cap, they don't qualify for the cap. Because of the transfer, correct. So what they'll say is, hey, they'll come in our office and say, my taxes are five hundred, well, their taxes are five hundred dollars and mine is four thousand. Why is that? That's not fair. And we have to explain because, yes, they got, they have four caps, or they have one cap, or you don't have a cap anymore. Cap is no longer there, you're paying on full market value, and we have to go over this part of the code that's, that was passed through Act three eighty.
So it's fair to say, if none of the, none of those things happen, that whatever the value that was established in the last reassessment without a transfer or anything, any homeowner can be conflicted that their assessed value, or the, I'm sorry, the market value can't go up more than fifteen percent.
The taxable value.
Taxable value.
Taxable value.
Okay, so you have the assessed value, you have this taxable value, that's always less, and that number can't go up more than fifteen percent.
Correct. Now, the taxable value may not always be less, it could be equal to the market value. I say that because if your market value does not exceed the fifteen percent, you may have another percentage, you may have ten percent, it's no more than fifteen percent. Or if the market, market value is less than, it can go straight to the market. And see, now you can see how's a lot of information explained, but we try to be the new value.
Well, it's a good thing to go to a market value that's lower than the new assessment, because generally speaking, the most it's gonna be a fifteen percent higher than what you have.
Yeah, and what I, correct. And I will say this, in our last quadrennial reassessment, we've noticed that since Act three eighty eight, the number of appeals has sharply declined at every reassessment. We're hoping that will do that this time. However, there's so much buying and selling and transferring back and forth, the cap on a lot of properties is no longer existing.
Right. Well, that's because of the sale. That's got nothing to do with someone who owned the house for four years or whatever it is.
Correct. But to relay that information, sometimes a difficult, you do it because it's a difficult conversation we have to have. We have those conversations frequently even now. We have a situation with, um, that I've experienced, like just going to the bluffing office more, um, that we have people, just ask the question. Um, we have a situation where we call buyer's remorse going on now. And so they're coming in and say, oh, no, I come from wherever, and they only do ten percent, and this is not fair, you know? I paid too much for it, and then the neighbor next door paid it somewhere, and neighbor next door, that paid somewhere, and you have to have those kind of, those hard conversations. But then I asked you a question. Okay, so again, we're talking more about the cap, and, um, it, it's, it's just a cap on the, on the taxable amount. And that's just another part of the section that I wanted to kind of throw in the slides, so you can have that for future reference. Again, more information about capping, um, because I think I pretty much covered that pretty well. Okay, so accessible transfer interest, we talked about that, that's when a property is accessible with a transfer interest. Okay, so I'm not gonna, we just kind of went over that briefly. Now, the appeal process, taxpayers can appeal. The difference in a quadrennial reassessment than a, than a non-quadrennial reassessment year is that once notification is sent out, either, even if it's non-assessment year, we send out notification to you and assessment notice, that taxpayer only have ninety days to appeal. This year is different because they don't have an entire calendar year. So normally, if a taxpayer did not get a notice, they'll have from January sixteenth to January fifteenth to appeal. But if they get a notice, they have ninety days. So that's why I'm talking about a minute ago, I relapped it because I know that people take those, and sometime they throw them in the drawer, just don't know what this is, and keep, and didn't, don't react until the tax bill. Yeah. The appeal process, they can appeal, um, the market value, they can peel the assessment that's on their notice, when I said assessment, legal residency, special assessment. They can peel the size, they can peel, um, pretty much everything that's on the face of that notice except the cap value. You cannot appeal the cap value. They had to do it in writing. Now, we do have our appeal process online where they can apply, they're gonna actually appeal online and do it that way. They don't have to send it up, I mean, there's a coupon on the back, you can just write it out and tear it off and send it in, that's fine. Um, but we also have it online so that it's making it easier for those who just wanna just do it digitally. Um, we ask that they supply us supporting documents because the law is very, very clear that the burden of proof is on the taxpayer to prove that our number is incorrect, the law's base is can uphold, that the assessment office numbers presumed to be correct until proven otherwise by the taxpayer. So we tell our taxpayers to please provide substantial nature appeal, providing market data, evidence, whatever you have to show why your valuation is, um, not a disagreement. We do have taxpayers that says, it's too high. They write that on there. And so, like, well, tell help us out here. Um, and so, but we try to stress December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
And do we use the December thirty first as the date for every quadrennial that we do?
That is correct. So in twenty twenty eight, it's December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Oh, that's true. Uh, question, so, or, does your office handle the appeals as well, or does that go to a separate body?
No, we have to handle those as well. So what typically happens is the appraiser that, um, if it's a value, let's talk about valuation. If the appraiser, um, handled the, the, the valuation of that neighborhood or that model of the group of properties, that appeal will go back to that appraiser to deal, to, to review and to make a turn, and have that discussion. The appeal process, the administrative appeal process can go all the way to the Saccon Supreme Court. Okay, so it starts with us, two levels, appeal, protest. You disagree, the second time you go to protest, if you disagree there, you can go before a board, which is a Board of Assessment Appeals, which you all decide who's gonna be on that board, I think. Um, and they can present, and we present, and a decision is made. If either party disagrees, you can go to administrative law court, and that, that point is considered de novo.
So, any questions about that before I go? The appeal process is pretty straightforward. Um, you talked about you use the market analysis model, so you don't literally go to every house, I get it. But how do you, um, so people are afraid you're gonna be wandering around, checking everybody's house, that's what they think you do. How do you, I'm serious. So what do you do about houses that have added additions? Because, you know, now they're all freaking out, I put a lanai on the back, I added a room, how are they gonna find it? What about that?
That's a good, that's a good point. Um, that's where we get, where we rely heavily on our building and codes department and the building and codes departments in other municipalities. So when that taxpayer gives, commits, I mean, submits, uh, to this, uh, application for, how would they apply for building, building permit? Our appraisers, once it's final or CO'd, will go out and follow, you know, make sure it's on the record the following year of completion. So that's how we know. And now, with those particular properties, we do site visit our building permits. That's where our, our data, our record is actually, we routinely scrub it on data because if someone gets in a building permit for something, lanai, addition, new construction, we're out on that property. Now, we're gonna look at that whole record to make sure it's right, because we may not be able to that site again until, to another time in, in the future. So yes, we use the building permits, that's.
And regardless of the reassessment.
Correct.
Building permit triggers.
Correct. Now, I will say this, is that when a taxpayer has put in an appeal with our office, now that appeal becomes more individualized. They're looking at their property and the values on their property, and we start doing that individual analysis. Because we've gotten past the mass value, mass, mass group of properties, like now we're looking at theirs. We're not looking at comprehensive assessments, we're not looking at what the neighbors evaluate, we're looking at theirs based on the market. We may have to go out on their property at that point to do some measurements. Say, for example, my square footage is wrong. Well, the only way we'll know that is we go out and measure it. So my appraiser, assigned appraiser will go out and measure the property. So legal residency special assessment ratio, um, that's another big one. And on this one, a lot of times, um, our taxpayers, they wanna know if there's a break on the, for full-time resident, yes, there is. State law provides that the four percent ratio is allowed to primary residency, um, and they are, if they're, if they are qualified for the special assessment, then they are exempt from school operation bills. And I'm gonna show you what that, what the, what that credit really means and how much a taxpayer can actually save. The code that's governing that is twelve forty three two twenty is extensive, but it's, it's, it has everything in there you need to know for the most part about the Saccon, for the legal residency special assessment ratio. So here's, if I know it's kind of small, but if you can look at your screens, you'll see where a four percent property is on, is on my left. And that shows your left and your right, but you'll see where it's two thousand dollars for a four percent and seven thousand for a sixth non-resident. See the tax savings there? So, and this is an exemption, you must qualify, this qualifies. The Saccon Code twelve forty three two twenty tells, um, us as assessors, um, how a taxpayer can qualify for this exemption. I will say this, that the assessment office is the gatekeeper for the exemption. It is filed with us, we determine it. And one of the reasons the school operation bills is so, they do not pay any of the school operation bill for that money, um, they are exempted from. So down at the assessment's office, we're the gatekeeper to ensure that individuals are qualifying and they're not receiving it, and they should not receive the four percent. So it's an exemption, gotta apply for it. You, eligibility has to be met, the burden of proof is on the taxpayer. And, um, the, the exemption, we exempt you, the individual from the school operation bill, so we kind of lease through that. It's filings online, the owner can apply for this, and they have from January sixteenth to January fifteenth. So right now, they put an application in, um, they were, it's for January, because they had, they have until January fifteenth, but next year for twenty three. So they're, they got some time. We pray to, and hope, for those that's listening, if you know someone, please have them apply now if they qualify. Do not wait till November, that's when it gets really busy. Okay, here's some eligibility requirements. Typically, these are the things that most of our taxpayers, these are the criteria that fall in, that we need to provide, they provide us. There is a portion in the code of twelve forty three two twenty that tells us that we may, as assessors, I can require additional document, documentation to prove eligibility for the residential, for through residency. Okay, so I'm including this here, if this, in your, in your folders that I gave you, you'll see where there's a handout there. And this was, um, I think Mr. Glover and Mr. Passamit, I shouldn't show who else was there, in twenty nineteen. Saccon Department of Revenue made a visit to us, yes, right here. And you remember this very, 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 very fondly. So what I've done, and when you get the, um, PowerPoint presentation, the link should work, I tried, tested it this morning, I hope it's gonna work. Um, and the other link is a handout, but I, I printed the handout for you. I would suggest, it's, it's kind of lengthy, please watch it. I mean, it's very informative. They did a walk, they were, come here and give us, you know, guidance and kind of fill us in. It is something I would encourage you to take time to watch. And it was presented, that's when it was presented in nineteen, so it wasn't that long ago. Okay, I just kind of put the laws here, because I know you're gonna get this presentation, so you will know where we're referring to and what statutes that we're relying on in code law. Okay, um, before I conclude, um, in your office on your packet, you'll see, um, another handout that I gave you. And, um, I kind of got that together last night, this morning, because I thought you would be interested in knowing. Um, and for as far as the growth, as you can see, I provided the legal residency totals, um, based on year and the non-legal residency totals. If you scroll, if you look on twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, we're still have applications to put in for twenty two, because they had till January fifteenth of twenty three to apply for twenty two. But as of November, our county is almost split in half with residents and non-residents. Almost split in half, and we are suspecting because of the, I call it the reverse migration, the south to the south, we're expecting that, that demand or that request for that exemption to increase. So these are numbers as of November, as you can see, we have forty two percent of our taxpayers are receiving the legal residency. And that's not counting November and December applications. Also included in your package, you'll see on those pages by district, I wanted you to see that where are, most of our applicants, our people that's, you know, getting, receiving the exemption as we all probably figure out that it's bluffed it. And you can actually see the numbers of our counts there of how many we have on the record receiving the exemption for, received exemption for tax year twenty two, and then the totals. Now, additionally on that page, I think, I'm not sure what page it is, page one, two, or three, I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what is being, I wouldn't say lost, but what exemption is not, they're not paying into the exemption as a whole. And these are estimates. In twenty twenty two, if the six percent, with the four percent legal residency property owners were at six percent and not receiving any exemption, they would be paying about a hundred and fifty seven thousand, two forty eight, eight ninety five in taxes that, that's the school operation that will go to our schools. So that money is not going to our, part of school operation as currently. So I wanted to show you if those, now, we're at almost half, but that number is gonna grow with regards to who's paying into school operations and who's not. So I wanna kind of demonstrate that for you, to see the impact of that. We want people to come, but this is what does happen. And also, I wanted to share that Beaufort County currently is worth, let me make sure I have it here. Um, as of twenty twenty two, again, we, it's based on, um, information that we had for tax law as far as our market value. Um, our total market value for our properties is like forty eight billion, forty eight billion dollars, or just forty eight and a half billion dollars. So the assessment's office, we are responsible for maintaining that forty eight billion dollars of market value. I suspect that with the increases that we're seeing, we're like from twenty one to twenty two tax year with regards to market value, not revenues collected, market value, there was a six percent increase. So I'm expecting that that forty eight and a half billion is probably gonna go well to fifty, fifty, maybe fifty one, fifty two billion dollars in market value for your property. I mean, and I think I'm shooting low, okay? And that's not taxable, that's market. But I think on the slide, I do demonstrate what the years are and what effective dates of those values. I hope I was able to point some I have.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have a simple question. If I were to ask someone, whether it be you or the Treasury's office, can I get an idea of how much tax was collected or charged by ZIPCA?
You may wanna talk to, um, the treasurer?
I thought you would say that.
I'm saying, the assessment office, we are strictly value, listing, we all market value, we don't get into the collective amount now, we probably don't figure it out.
You set, the tax rate is set for you, the number, the dollars.
The value is set by us.
Okay, so I'll ask.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Ebony, if I'm looking at these pretty charts here, in eighteen, sixty two percent were not legal residents. And you're saying by twenty twenty two, it's nearer to fifty percent?
Fifty eight percent.
Yeah, okay, so every time there's more legal residents, the school district's taking a hit.
The school operations and they're not paying, those individuals, forty two percent is not paying to the school operations.
Correct. So as we get more and more that our legal residents, the schools are, have to figure that out.
Again, I, you know, I just know that they're not paying the school operations, and that number gets, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, let me ask this question. Um, where do you show commercial property? Would that be non-residential property?
Correct.
Okay, and so to offset the school district, one of the things that if we can do, increase commercial property and commercial investment, that's gonna help the school district a lot as well. So I think economic development is really a key to offset the legal residents, uh, people who.
The shift, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I think we're in a good direction. We just gotta do a better job of getting more commercial businesses, especially a lot of industry and stuff that goes, we need to pay the school taxes.
I had a question. Oh, you said the, the, on day. Credit that to better education, people accept their bill.
I think that the P O's going down because of the capping, you know, since Act three eighty eight. And before Act three eighty eight, one year, it was that, going back at the time. It was in two thousand and eight, I remember, we had, we had about fifteen thousand appeals. Counsel opened the appeal process up because of the outcry, because you gotta keep in mind, there was a recession and values dropped. And counsel decided that they wanted to open the, and what happened was a lot of individuals that appealed, they appealed again, fifteen thousand was the initial. And it took us a minute to dig out of that, but with the legislation change of Act three eighty eight, then every year, we, every year, quadrennial, we've seen a decline in the number of appeals. then every year, we, every quadrennial, we've seen a decline in the number of appeals. I am wondering what's gonna happen this cycle, because we have so many individuals who have came here and gonna be at full market value. All those twenty-twenty-two sales that occurred, those individuals are not gonna be capped. And those are individuals that's gonna say, well, he's, or she, but understand, we have to have those hard conversations.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I must probably commend her, she did an excellent job, uh, with St. Harold's, so.
I saw that, I appreciate it on that. Um, so, um, that concludes everything. If you all have any questions for us, um, now, you can ask them, or if you think of anything that you want us to get for you.
If you're giving you input now, go forth and create a budget.
We will. Um, and Mr. Chairman, you and I had a meeting scheduled at three-thirty, we have moved that back to two-thirty.
Okay, very good.
So that you can go home sooner.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, there be no further action. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Joe, I'm gonna suggest your wife, please, Ebony, to.